The date is 2018. We're all here for this one, which is good. So we'll go to three. We have two items on the agenda tonight. I'd like to remind council to refrain from asking questions until staff presentations are completed. So we'll start at 3.1. Council, you will receive an update and provide a feedback on the Parks and Recreation Department FY18 pickleball courts and softball field improvement plan projects. Our presenters are Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Director, and David Seid, Parks and Recreation Manager. Welcome, gentlemen. We're anxious to hear.
Great, thank you, Mayor. We're here tonight to present two updates on the, on two current CIP projects for the Parks and Recreation Department. First one is an update on the pickleball courts that are coming to Goodyear. And as you can see behind me, we have a large contingency from the pickleball community that are excited to see courts coming to Goodyear. So maybe if we can have them stand, Mayor, and be recognized? There were a few others in attendance, but it ran a little late for them, so... But I did tell them we would recognize their, their presence, so... And with that, I'm going to turn things over to David to present tonight's topic.
Thank you, Nathan. Good evening, everyone. The first project I'll be sharing information on is the pickleball court project. If you recall, about a year ago, that was a resident-driven request to provide some dedicated pickleball courts in Goodyear. Currently, there are no public dedicated pickleball courts within our department system. One of the short-term solutions we have attempted to promote pickleball in our parks is the restriping of tennis courts to make those dual purposes, with the ultimate goal of having some dedicated pickleball courts in the future. As a result of discussion and direction from council, we explored adding some pickleball courts to our FY18 budget. The scope of that project was six new pickleball courts, and they were originally earmarked for Goodyear Community Park with a budget of $168,000. As we explored the project, we went ahead and looked closer at that northeastern portion of the unused ballfield there, which we had earmarked for the pickleball courts. As we began to look at that area in detail, we began to learn of the proximity to the neighboring residents to the east and the potential noise impact that adding pickleball courts may have. When we went through an initial review of our project with Development Services, they definitely made mention of past projects, one most notably being in Pebble Creek, in where pickleball courts were expanded and there were some resident noise concerns brought up. Following that, and in addition to the proximity and distance from parking and restrooms, staff collectively worked with engineering to look at alternative locations. As we started to look at alternative locations, the existing sport court complex came into view. So currently, we have two NBA-sized basketball courts that are outdoor lit, and they also can be used for outdoor volleyball. When we looked at this area, its proximity is much closer to the parking, much closer to the restrooms. It's already lit, and it is quite a distance from any neighboring residences to minimize the potential noise impact. Following those discussions and reviews, staff started looking more closely at what could we do to the existing slab and possibly modify those two NBA-sized basketball courts and possibly accommodate pickleball courts on the existing sport court slab. The industry best practice for sports courts is to cluster them together, maximize economy of scale on lighting, surface courts, fencing, and have them closer to shared-use parking and restrooms. So it kind of fell into place where, what if we modified this area a little bit? What if we shrunk the existing NBA-sized courts, which quite frankly exceed the national best practice, which is high school regulation courts found in a typical community park, shifted those to the east, and then free up some space there to actually construct four pickleball courts that would be dedicated to pickleball and not be shared amongst tennis? We got pretty excited about that because, as you can see on the rough sketch that we have, we do have that ability to reduce those basketball courts slightly, add the four pickleball courts, extend the slab on the southwest portion of the existing court, and really accommodate both uses simultaneously. I want to be real clear that this modification would not reduce the amount of basketball courts. It would not reduce the amount of basketball hoops or standards, if you will. It would just reduce them from a 94-foot-length basketball court to an 84-foot length. And in the five years I've been here, I've never seen anybody out there playing court line to court line on an NBA-sized court. Not saying it doesn't ever happen, but it's definitely not the norm. So when we started looking at this and taking it a little bit closer, we definitely engaged our pickleball user groups. We definitely engaged current users of the basketball courts. We wanted to make sure that they had a chance to weigh in on this suggested change. And really, their questions centered around, why would the modifications be used? What are we attempting to accommodate? And once we shared that story of the popularity in pickleball, as you can see, and we've heard over the years, in addition to maintaining still two high school-sized basketball courts, we definitely look forward to pricing this out and see what, what this option would look like if we were able to, to go down that pathway. So with that, we went ahead and worked with our engineering department to take a look at what this project would cost. The modifications would fall within budget. We would actually have a 12% contingency. We would be below our $168,000 original budget. The project would take approximately 120 days to complete. And we are looking to launch this project and actually start on April 30th with a project completion date of June 30th. With that, I'm going to take a brief pause and see if there's any questions or comments. I know normally we do that at the end, but since I have two projects, it might be opportune to focus on pickleball at the moment.
Thank you, that's thoughtful. Comments? Councilman Fazillo.
This is all within budget that you have right now, correct?
Correct.
And allows you for the contingency for any overruns?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Lortano.
I, I think it's a great idea. We're keeping both sports, and I like where you put them. I mean, it's great, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Osborn.
Thank you. Well, I know that the people that are in the audience have been waiting a good long time, and I respect the ideas that you brought here. And quite frankly, being closer to the restrooms and having better lighting and all, all the way around, and not causing an impact on the neighborhood, I, I can understand and appreciate. I think this is a good alternative. You know, I, I wish we could have, you know, had this six months ago, but, you know, I do respect what you guys came up with, and moving forward, thank you.
Councilwoman Hampton.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good use of the, the area. I mean, I hate to lose the, one of the full-size courts, but it sounded like you said that there's not much use to it, so... So yeah, so I thank you for being creative and finding a solution for the pickleball courts. And yeah, I'm excited to see people out there, out there using it, dedicated to that, so...
The day they open, they will be used.
Yeah, exactly, good.
Councilman Stiff.
I absolutely agree with the location. I think having it more central to that park is really so much more, more convenient. I just, yeah. Would love to see us get it done sooner rather than later, but thanks.
Vice Mayor.
And so the plan is just four pickleball courts rather than the six?
That is correct, Vice Mayor Campbell, yes.
But we are still going to have a conversation to possibly put more pickleball courts later on in other parks, possibly.
Right now, we're master-planning the next community park, and that's targeted to have six pickleball courts in it at the ti, at this time.
Okay, great. Well, I was one of the people that walked the petition around Pebble Creek to even get a pickleball court. So when we were successful, and then because we have over 1,000 members in our club, we needed more courts, and we made a lot of noise. And so they did have to build a wall around it. But I think we've mitigated the noise now because it's so popular. I'm excited about this, and I certainly hope that whenever you have the courts finished, you'll do a ribbon-cutting ceremony.
For sure.
Which would be nice. So thank you very much.
Any other council comments? Well, I want to thank the citizens. You know, we, our goal is to make a quality life, a quality life for everybody in Goodyear. And in order for us to know that, people have to come before us. Sometimes we're astute enough to add the recreational facility, what it needs to be. But this time, this was new for us. But compliments to staff figuring this out. Because it would be terrible for us to sit here after knowing that the other area with the noise would not be acceptable to the neighborhood. And I know because I live in Pebble Creek. And so I remember the consternation and the complaints when I originally changed those volley, those courts, the tennis courts and bocce courts to, to pickleball. But it's a great sport, and it's amazing to me, it covers all age groups, so... And that's what we strive for, and you'll all know that when you get to these retirement years, to stay young and vital and healthy, we need these kinds of exercises. So I'm pleased, so I think, I think it's got, certainly, the council in this work session is in positive reinforcement for this, so you have your direction. So we appreciate, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now, Mayor and council, with regard to the softball field project in Australia, I want to acknowledge that we missed the mark with regards to project scope and project budget. As you may recall, this was a late, rather late-arriving project. And looking back at it, I, I think the right thing would have been for staff to have taken a pause and possibly do more due diligence on project scope and pricing and some good research. It would have meant delaying the project a year, but I think we would have found ourselves, staff, in a better situation to present some better numbers. And looking back, I, I just think that would have been the right approach from a staff perspective. This is a great example of why the city as a whole is taking a pause with regards to CIP projects and really making sure that we work through scopes and, and the project numbers costing appropriately. So we, this isn't one of our finest moments, but with challenges comes opportunities. And we do think we, as a staff, have worked through this, this problem and have come up with a pretty good alternative. So having said that, I'll, I'll turn things back to David, but I did want to recognize and acknowledge that we missed the mark on this one.
We appreciate that.
Thank you, Nathan. If you recall, about a year ago at this time, as Nathan mentioned, we had the softball field brought forward. It was resident-driven, as currently in the Foothills Community Park, there are no adult ballfields. So we have the three-field Little League complex, but the far easternmost field that you see on the rendition right there was slated for Phase Two and, and hasn't arrived. So when we did scope out the project, we had the intention of one separate adult baseball softball field that could be dual-purpose. It would actually add inventory to Little League and would actually allow for adult play if someone was having a picnic or something of that sort. So the original budget for that project, $318,000. This is Phase One, that we currently have improved in Foothills Community Park. The additional ballfield was to be built in that easternmost undeveloped area, as you can see. When we started looking at this project, we, we had a couple fatal flaws. We, we made some assumptions that we have currently 90% design plans. We had anticipated we would be able to get those to 100% relatively inexpensively. And unfortunately, when we saw what it would take those plans to go from 90% to 100% with today's standards and to get those stamped and, and ready for build, we were, we were shocked. And that was kind of the first point that, that made us aware that, that we may have some budget challenges. In addition, although it's fairly flat, there is some, some grading and drainage that would definitely have to be dealt with. You can kind of see the vegetation there. Anytime you see a line of vegetation, obviously, that's where water flows. So just making sure that that was contained and dealt with. We, like Nathan mentioned, we, we didn't do our, our due diligence on that. We, we, we missed the mark, and, and for that, we're not real happy or proud of. But nonetheless, that's, that's where we found ourselves. Lastly, the lighting. Just to go ahead and install the lighting for the third field came in at about three times of, as what we had anticipated. So those, those things kind of mounted quickly and, and really forced us to take a look at this project and consider some alternatives to ultimately salvage an adult opportunity out at Foothills. When we started looking at alternatives, one thing that popped out to us was, on the, one of the original designs of the Foothills Community Park, the far eastern field actually was intended to be a dual-purpose, adult-size, youth-adult ballfield. So we, we naturally started there and started brainstorming, what if we took the existing easternmost field, extended those fences out another 100 feet from their existing 200 feet to the 300 feet required for adults? What would that do for us as far as opportunities? We, we know from our good partner, Goodyear Little League, that they are adding softball. So they would benefit from having a skinned infield, any softball field in the inventory. As well as when it's not being used for Goodyear Little League, members of the public could rent the field for adult softball on a drop-in basis, like I mentioned, if they had a park or something like that. We would absolutely make sure that our, our partners, Goodyear Little League, were taken care of, you know, for priority use of our fields. We're very supportive of that program, and we would make sure that there wouldn't be any conflict. So when we explored this opportunity, we definitely worked closely with Goodyear Little League. We've been in follow-up with the residents who originally brought up this idea. And ultimately, they're, they're just looking for a place that adults can play, which this would provide. So although it is above the current project budget, and we have it estimated at $448,500, we would require an additional budget amount of $130,500 to our existing $318,000. Before we have discussion on that option, I do want to visit on ultimately Option Two, which would be to proceed with the original new ballfield as scoped. This would bring on that easternmost ballfield. It would provide up, an additional field and maintain that opportunity for youth and adults to play. It would expand youth base, youth baseball opportunities. But as you can see, that, that's at a considerable expense. So that total project cost, we have rough-order-magnitude cost estimates that we feel very comfortable with, but ultimately, that's $1,297,200. So with that, just under an additional $1 million would be required to see that project through. This is really where we find ourselves here, kind of at a crossroads and, and definitely want input and guidance on exploring these two options. This really sums it up as far as what those two options and the budget impact that would be needed to see them to fruition. When we did explore options to fund that deficit that we, that we face, we definitely reached out to finance. We learned of a capital project reserve fund that could be utilized if council gave direction to explore that. That project is available and hasn't been spoken for at this time. And if council did so, give direction to, to consider that, we would bring that forward at a regular meeting for, for a budget transfer to see either of these projects through. With that, I'll, I'll open it up to questions and conclude my presentation.
I think it'll be a very stimulating meeting here, so I'm going... Bill, I'm going to recognize Councilman Lortano, since she lives in that area upstairs, and then I'll get to you next, okay? Appreciate that. Sherry?
I, first of all, thank you for going through and getting us those numbers.
Sherry, yeah, speak in the microphone a little bit, please.
Is this better? Yeah. Thank you, thank you for getting us those numbers and everything, because I think it really does show where we're at. And understandable things sometimes cost more than what we understand. I think you've done a lot for the park up there in the last couple of years. We've added the play area, we've had the community partnership with the bike park, adding that on. So I think we've been doing a lot up there, which is really good, and the residents do appreciate that. I'm, like Option One, I think it's a great idea to expand that. And then if it grows in a couple of years and we need to add another field, I assume we still have room to add the other field at a later date.
We do.
My only other question, so I'm for Option One. I think that's the most economical, and it gets it, I would assume, done the quickest to get softball moving up there. For the devotion field that's up behind the grade school, that was our first way back when Arizona, who has that? And is that something that we can rehab or refurbish at some time, or is that not us?
I believe it's controlled by the school district, and it's a youth-sized field.
Okay. Because it had lights, I was asking.
Okay. Councilman Stiff.
So just to be clear, if you expand, if you go with Option One and expand the youth field now, that's not going to prohibit you from building Option Two later?
There would have to be some, some redesign of that area, but I feel we would be able to, to fit in another ballfield there, yes.
Some, some question. Well, yeah, I'm trying to envision the extra feet that are required there, and it looks like it's going to impinge pretty much on that other, that other thing. Because I agree with, with Sherry that I like, I like Option One so we can get something done now. And I'd like to see how Option Two then fits into the CIP discussion for out-years as, as that moves forward. And since it's my favorite source of revenue, I'd like to see us think about the manager's contingency for that amount.
He's one to surprise the new manager. You know that. That's just a, that's an extra gift given to you as your new employee.
George. Sorry, Mayor.
Just, just a moment. Are you asking me to do something? Well, I, I know he does, but we have, we have Councilman Osborne waiting, so yes, please.
Thank you, thank you. So, thank you. Both of these projects, you know I pushed for at the last budget. And, and at that time, obviously, the thought of the price was something that was workable. So, you know, I understand where you're, where you're sitting right now, and I, I get it. Two questions. So first of all, I, I'm with Bill and Sherry of the feeling of sticking with the first plan. And, and the reason being is that I think there is further discussion that would need to take place about that capital project reserve, because I don't know what else is out there that we're not thinking about by just saying yes to this right now. The other thing that I question too, and is a needs assessment of, you know, over the years, we've seen where we're X amount of soccer field short, we're X amount of this short, you know? And so it opens up the question of, okay, is that what we're short? Or do we really need six more soccer fields in its place? So that's, you know, I asked that question too.
That's a great question, and I think that master plan was done so many years ago that when Phase Two does come online, we anticipate having to remaster plan that and go back to the community and really assess what those needs are. Because just looking at Phase Two now, it may not be in line with, with what our needs are today. That's a, that's a great point.
Right. So, so I would, I would suggest that we stick with, you know, we're still giving the citizens what they were asking for up there, and that is that softball field. And so, you know, I appreciate that.
All right, Councilman Fazillo.
I, I tend to agree with the discussion so far as far at, well, first, I want to say I want to thank you for your honest and frank lead-in. It's nice and refreshing to say, hey, you know what? We didn't deliver what we thought, but, you know, it's a learning experience. So again, I really, truly appreciate that. Second thing is, I, I think as the other council members had mentioned about the additional money, there's possibly other things, you know, fending for that. So I would rather see that come up in the, you know, the budget process on the C, you know, on the CIP to see what others fighting for that additional $979,000 for Option Two, okay? But I, I tend to agree, if you have no, first of all, the $130,500 finances told you that money is, is available without hurting some other project that's already in the hopper?
I'll have Doug answer that question, but I believe we were, and not to put Doug on the spot, but we were, we were led to believe that currently no other projects were completing, competing for that 1.6.
Well, you just put him on the spot, so here you go.
Factory, would you like him to come up?
Well, let, let Doug.
Yes, that would be better.
Nathan's correct, we do not have anything else in the hopper this month.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Again, I'm, I'm with Option One. I don't have a problem. Apparently, the, the need is down there as long as there's no restricted, and he's got the funds on there. I tend to go with One and wait till the budget process, you know, completed to see if there's the additional nine or like, Councilmember, you know, Osborne mentioned. Maybe there's other type of things you need that that money can go to as well, if it's soccer fields, et cetera, so...
We're not anticipating, if, if we go with Option One, we're not anticipating bringing a budget request back this year for Option Two. That will be handled when Phase Two of the park kicks in, and we think that's somewhere around the 10-year mark from now.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Well, thank you, Nathan and David. I do understand the master plan, and it doesn't matter how well we master plan. As we move through the master plan, things change. The economy changes, and we always face with that, and inflation, everything. We do thank you for letting us, or telling us that you underestimated it, because we know upfront it was underestimated, and we have learned through some other projects that were underestimated but after the fact that we were in the middle of them. So we appreciate that. I think too, that if we do Option One, which would let us have an adult softball field up there now, and they could use it for their seasons, and if they don't use it for their season, then we could let the public use it, because there are a lot of churches and, and groups that like to get a softball team together and have their own little tournaments or whatever. But we can talk about the $1.2 million project when you are more ready to go forward. So I, I, I have to tell you, everything is going up. What you estimated five years ago does not pencil out today, so don't feel bad. It's just unfortunately that everything has skyrocketed, so... And now that the economy is better, the prices are higher, and it's going to cost us a lot more money to provide these amenities for our residents. And we have to figure out how we can pay for it and how we can provide for it. And I'd like to someday see that park finished, because it's such a jewel up there. And it's, it's a wonderful amenity for those folks that live up there and those of us that go up there to watch the Little League games. It's a lot of fun. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and don't beat yourself up about this. Oh, my goodness.
Oh, Brandon.
Brandon, sorry about that.
Just being quiet.
Councilman Hampton, you're on.
Yeah, so I read your eight, whatever Bill said here, but yeah, I like Option One as well. I like to look at the budget for the full ballpark. I'd like to get the other one in there sooner than later. I don't know what the feasibility or what the needs assessment would say, but I think that'd be good for residents up there. And then is the east one, the only one that can expand? I see that, I don't know if it would affect the northern one or not, as another option to get maybe two in there. I think it's like the third one would probably affect our new playground and the soccer fields. But I don't know if we could go east without affecting that, the, the pump track or not. So I'm just looking at other options to get more, more use out of the fields if possible, so...
This one was the most viable from an expansion standpoint of not going into the soccer fields or the, the pump track.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just looking at other, if another $100,000 can get us to the second field, the second expansion of a field as well, so I'm just curious about that. But yeah, no, thank you. I think it's, it's important to have options for residents, and this is obvious, just like the pickleball courts. It's a resident-driven initiative. I'd like to see, see that through the other, all the resident-driven projects. So helps with, yeah, quality of life and health and wellness, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Of course, I agree with Option One, and appreciate you coming back and giving us an option, all right, to solve the problem. And again, stop beating yourselves up. You know, we've got a couple park things going on. They're developing a central park there on Yuma in Australia, and we're doing the health park, you know? So a lot, you know, you're only, the, the department is only so big, and, and you've worked long, long hours on everything, so... So we've come to the table, we've got a solution. So this is just an agreement on this today and we'll take it on to the next meeting. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. All right, let's go on to 3.2. Staff will provide an update and seek direction from council on the proposed site for the South Goodyear Fire Station 186. Our presenters are Chief Paul Louisi and Fire Chief, twice I gave you the chief, and Rebecca Zook, our engineer. What a combination.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening with the chief to discuss the site selection and our staff's recommendation for Fire Station 186. Again, that is our second fire station in EMR and I'll be referring to it tonight as 186. And then we'll also be providing you a recommendation based on a significant analysis that we've done internally and as well as reaching out to our stakeholders, the fire department, our soon-to-be architect and their team as well. So just to give us a bit of an orientation, we're talking again about Fire Station 186, which is at the southern reaches of the Australia community. I've shown the overall location and then sort of a blow-up version of the sighting area that we're looking at, which is between Rainbow Valley, Australia Parkway and Willis Road area just south of Ray. That's really where we were focusing our attention.
As you can see, we have denoted where the current fire station is in Australia Mountain Ranch. So Fire Station 182 is the most northern point on that map. To the west there is our automatic aid partner Buckeye Valley Fire Station 326. They're at Rainbow and Arlington roughly. And then you can see the city-owned site that we have is at Rainbow Valley Road and Willis on the most western portion of that as well.
So how we started looking at this, again, we have the city-owned property, which was acquired over 10 years ago. And we wanted to make sure that we looked at the entire area instead of just looking at the site that we currently owned and assume that that was the best for us. So we reached out to our partner in Newland and they were gracious enough to begin having conversations with us about this entire area. And so up in the right-hand corner of the photograph, you can see some A, B, C, D. We had nine different sites that we wanted to look at up in the Willis Road and Australia Parkway intersection. And we did look at those, a number of them with our partners in the fire department. We were looking at access, we were looking at site improvements. We looked at just an enormous amount of what we need to bring with water and sewer bringing it to the site. And we ended up only having one viable site, which was D, which is located south of the Willis Road intersection and on the east side of Australia Parkway. Once we got to that point, we wanted to take that new site on Australia Parkway and do some final analysis and compare it to our existing site that we currently own on Willis Road. With that, we looked at more detailed layouts of how the fire station would be situated, what would be the access to and from the site as you would exit the site going east, west, north, south. We really tried to look at all of the opportunities there to make sure we're making the right choice. And then we also looked at the response time maps. I'm going to hand that over to Paul in just a minute for the next two slides. But beyond that, we also looked at the site improvements. We looked at what would happen onsite. Most of those are usually standard improvements that you would have with your parking lot and access to the bays and exit from the site. And then we also looked at the offsite. So how far would we have to bring water or sewer to the site? What type of drainage impacts would we have? And then we finally looked at our proximity to existing facilities and infrastructure and if there were any benefits that we could realize from that. And then the last item was the rezoning process. Both of these sites are not currently zoned for a public facility. However, with the existing site that we currently own, it has been known to the public for over 10 years as a fire station site. And it's in their PAD documents. And the actual underlying zoning, though, is employment. And then we have the new site that we're looking at on Australia. That's currently zoned for single-family residential.
So as Rebecca said, here are the response analysis on the two sites. So first, we're going to look at Rainbow and Willis. You can see the green is the four-minute response time. Yellow is six minutes. Eight is the red. And then the ten minutes is the blue. So pretty good response times from that station at Rainbow and Willis. Still allows us access into the Cantomea neighborhood. There is a back access road, street that goes in off of Willis as well as Mountain View to the north and east allows us access into the Montecito neighborhood as well. So decent access from that point in time. We've also talked to you previously about the North Waterman Wash as well. So that, you know, has about a six-minute response time down to just about Chandler Heights Road. So very similar to the previous map that you had seen when we talked about the North Waterman Wash. And then we also looked at the Willis and Australia Parkway location. So again, still have access to Cantomea. Montecito will have to go a little bit further north and then head back east to get back into the Montecito neighborhood. It is located along an arterial road, which sometimes, you know, certainly won't be a problem right now, but as time progresses, could be a little bit of an issue having the station right on an arterial road. But again, still kind of gives us six-minute response time down into that North Waterman Wash area. So for the most part, they're pretty much similar from either site as response time and analysis.
So again, back to a little bit more detailed consideration of the financial impact to each site option. Again, the first Willis Road existing site, the standard cost for doing, completing the improvements around a fire station site are approximately $1.4 million. The most significant portion of that cost is the paving and the concrete because they need to be reinforced because of the fire truck. And then we also looked at the changes to that overall site plan and how that would be impacted regardless of which site you were at. So with the first Willis Road, there are actually, some of the improvements are the curb gutter and sidewalk that would be associated. And so some of that, we have some decreases with costs there. And we included a right turn lane. And then for the Australia Parkway site, the sewer and fill costs were the most significant. That particular site sets about four to five feet lower than the roadway at that location. So we would be bringing fill in. In addition, there would be a median cut required of the existing median in Australia and we'd be carrying sewer about 800 linear feet to the site. So with all of the information that we had, we sort of put sort of a pros and cons list together. And again, I don't want to go over these again because we've touched on them. They both need to be rezoned. There's some site concerns with the Australia Parkway, potential drainage impacts. There's a significant amount of drainage coming from the northeast. The Rainbow and Willis site, we don't have any access concerns. The site's a little bit larger for us. The rezoning process, although we would still need to do it, would appear to be a little more straightforward with the Newland community. The overall, this is just a recap of the financial portion that has been approved with the budget already. There's $5 million, a little over $5 million with the station itself. We have vehicle costs also and then personnel costs that are from fiscal year '20 to '24 that are already included. With that, we just wanted to give you staff's recommendation, which is actually to stay with the current site that we have and continue to work with our partner in Newland communities. And we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. We'd like to go on. Councilman Laura Tonno?
I'll just start again. I guess when I look to see where 182 is and, because that's already on Australia, and I could be wrong, but it looks like having it on Willis gives you more coverage on that area rather than having them lined up. Am I off or?
No, I mean, I think they are similar in their coverage. I believe, it's my opinion that the Willis Rainbow Valley site gives you a little bit, you know, deeper coverage. You can see from the green there. It's.
I'm just thinking that you add 182's green area, it seems like we have more covered. So I guess, I guess I'm, from what you're saying, I would agree with staff's recommendation to do the Willis. It just seems like it goes where the building's going to be rather than just lining them up on Australia.
Correct.
So I'm good with that.
Councilman Hampton?
I know, I got you.
No, I agree. I agree with Councilwoman Laura Tonno as well with the location. I just, I guess I was confused. I thought the one up north or farther over was a different location. I thought that was a done deal, but I didn't realize we were still deciding on which one, so. But I'm glad to see that we're, that we're coming to a decision now. And then I guess I just misunderstood, but I appreciate you bringing it back here. So and then you said the land swap with Newland? Is that? So I guess I understand the deal, if there is a deal that we made. So if we go with the one we own right now, the four-acre one on Willis, is the site D, was there a deal where we were going to swap land at some point? Or are we still, is that still an option? Or is, but, yeah, is there an option? Or what's the, I guess, is there something future there we could do there?
So previously, last year, we had brought to the idea of a resolution which would allow the city manager to discuss those other site options with Newland. So we needed that piece to, as part of the development agreement, to be able to allow city manager to start talking with Newland about a potential swap. But, you know, through our site analysis and as Rebecca stated throughout her presentation, we looked at a lot of different sites and typically, you know, what we came down to is just really just those two sites. And we realized there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the Australia Willis site, much more than our original site. So, you know, what we wanted to bring to you guys was the decision at this point, you know, in our impression that we should stay at the original site, really no need to make that move and have more costs for the onsites.
Yeah, no, I agree. I appreciate it. I think it's a, it looks like the best, the best solution and the best thing for the Australia area, that whole region up there. So, yeah, thank you for bringing it.
Okay.
Councilman Stiff?
I don't disagree with the recommendation at all, but I do have a question. How did we end up even looking at option D since we've had this property all along? Where did option D come from?
That's a good question. We had had conversations, you know, making sure that that was in the right spot. When we had the fire station study that was finished in December of 2016, we had them look at that area specifically and see where the best location would be. So during the fire station study, they looked at a lot of those areas and specifically, they had looked at Australia and Willis as kind of the optimal site. But also the response map and the heat map also provided a little bit more westerly of that intersection as a good area to be in a response zone from. So I think from that piece, from the fire station study, those conversations started to occur with Newland about, you know, what's the best location. So, you know, we did our due diligence and really looked at all the different sites. And what ultimately we found out was that a lot of the onsite improvements at Australia and Willis was going to be a lot more than what we needed to spend.
Sure. The situation sounds very similar to the relocation of 181.
Yeah.
Site said, the study suggested an optimal location, but there was an alternative that fits the need as well. So this isn't much different than that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. Thank you for doing your due diligence. And, you know, it shows our citizens that you take everything into consideration. But most of all, at the end of the day, it's the most lives we can cover at the quickest response time. And that's what we're doing. And so I appreciate you bringing it back.
Councilman Fazillo?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with what you recommend, especially since the savings is what, about $300,000? So from a location of a site is concerned, that is something, especially since you're not showing a whole lot of difference between the two on the response times. I've got to go with option one because of the cost, thanks.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, so my question, chief, is the cost to us to do the recommendations of the right turn lane and that will cost us an additional $1.3 million, correct? Oh, excuse me, Rebecca, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So the right turn lane curb gutter and sidewalk will actually be included in that $1.4 million?
That's what I mean, yeah. This is additional. We own the land and this is what it's going to cost us to put our fire station on that land.
Yes, absolutely. And those, the right turn lane curb gutter and sidewalk are in addition to the onsite improvements that are also wrapped into that $1.4.
Perfect. And we're going to be on sewer and everything up there. Perfect. And my next question is, once we, if we say this is where we want the fire station to be sited, will we see what the fire station is going to look like sometime?
Absolutely. What I can tell you is we're almost finalizing the scope and fee for our architectural team and we hope to be bringing that contract to council on March 22nd. That'll get them, I'm sorry, March 26th. That will get them moving and preparing actual documents for future consideration by council.
Actually design it. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Osborne? Well, I think we're all in agreement on this. Thank you much for the work and we look forward to the next time that we see the design. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, I'm sure we're going to use any of your council information at the next meeting, okay? And the manager's summary, I think we're all ready. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting and then we're going to open the regular meeting. This meeting is adjourned.